Good afternoon again, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Hope Whitney, and I'm here with Lisa Abwaf to present both the settlement that's before you and then a little bit more about the Broadway Corridor project. So, next slide. I'll hit this very quickly because it's a recap. We had a procurement process. It resulted in NWDD getting the work. And NWDD alleged that there was discrimination in the procurement process, and they sought $5.5 million in damages. The litigation and the discovery process received, revealed no evidence of discrimination. Oh, yeah. Oh, NWI, I apologize.
You're on record, it's correct.
Yes, NWI, the plaintiff, alleged discrimination. NWDD, an Alaska native-owned firm partnered with Raymore Construction, an African-American-owned, COBID-certified firm, to do the work. Next slide. And to recap, under Prosper Portland's insurance policy, the insurer controls the defense. And if we wish to have the benefits of the policy, we must allow the insurer to decide when and how to settle this lawsuit. Otherwise, we would need to use taxpayer funds to move forward and take this to trial. Our insurer made the business decision to settle the case, and they specifically told us that this decision should not be construed as an admission of liability or an admission that Prosper Portland engaged in discrimination. The settlement terms call for Prosper Portland's insurer to pay NWI 1.3 million, and in exchange, NWI will dismiss the lawsuit and release Prosper Portland from any claims related to the facts underlying this lawsuit. So your approval of this resolution today would give Prosper Portland's Executive Director authority to enter into this proposed settlement on these terms. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments at this point?
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. We thought it was also important to share just kind of a broader picture of what is happening with the Broadway Corridor project. So I'm here to do a little bit of that. It will speak to some of the items I think you've heard about in terms of performance on the project, all the way through to what else is happening on the different components outside of site preparation. I'm Lisa Abwaf, Director of Development and Investment with Prosper Portland. Should have started there. Just as a reminder, I think this was mentioned by Hope, but I really want to highlight that without completing all of these four scopes of work, no other work can proceed. So particularly without the demolition of the processing and distribution center, you can't put in the streets. If you can't put in the streets, you can't put in the utilities. If there are no utilities or streets for folks to access, you can have no new housing or mixed-use development. So this is why it was really important to continue to stay on schedule. And also wanted to acknowledge that this is a first phase. We will be back in front of you multiple, multiple times. This is really a first phase and a critical first phase in multiple phases of a project that will last all the way through to 2030 and beyond as we see both infrastructure go in, but then multiple cycles of phase development, including, we'll talk a little bit more about the RFQ that the Portland Housing Bureau has out on the market. Next slide, Justin. So before we look forward, kind of it's always important to look backwards and really wanted to acknowledge the work of the Labor Management Community Oversight Committee, the work of our own staff, who are our compliance staff, and the work of our contractors, who did the four scopes of work that you see here. So what we call kind of site work or site preparation was made up of four really critical scopes of work. We started with the demolition of the vehicle maintenance facility. That is where the post office used to maintain their own vehicles. We then proceeded and relocated the post office retail function out of the main facility, because you can't demolish the building without relocating it to the ground floor of the garage. Did some site work and soils remediation, and then did also did the demolition of the main facility. And just acknowledge that this has also been a partnership with four key contractors, including McDonald's Excavating on the demolition of the vehicle maintenance facility, a partnership of O'Neill Walsh Community Builders on relocation of the USPS retail operations. Northwest Infrastructure performed our site and soils remediation, and then the partnership that Hope mentioned of Northwest demolition and dismantling, together with Raymore Construction, performed the demolition of the main processing facility. And I think really the numbers speak for themselves. So across all four of those projects, 93% of resources were spent on COBID-certified MBE and DBE firms. That translates into over the period of kind of the past four years or so, which was spanned the pandemic. So really critical of kind of supporting our contracting community throughout the pandemic. Thirty-six million went to BIPOC-owned firms. Thought it was important also to provide disaggregated data. So you can see here how that kind of gets apportioned by ownership of those businesses. Seventy percent of hours performed on-site whereby BIPOC workers, just as a reminder, kind of our requirements are that there is a certain apprenticeship on-site, but then we also have goals around the breakdown. And really, just as critically, very often, we are challenged to perform to our goals around women on the work site, and 20% of hours across those four scopes of work were performed by women. Last but not least, I just wanted to kind of recall up. We do have a Labor Management Community Oversight Committee that meets monthly. It is staffed by our staff person, Wendy Wilcox. And we have not only tracked kind of the performance based on our business and workforce equity, but in fact, we tracked our performance against the community benefit agreement that we negotiated with the Healthy Communities Coalition. So even though we don't necessarily have a signed term sheet, we treated it as though we had signed it and committed to it. And so we've also hit all of our targets around local hiring that was a component of that CBA. Next slide. And as we look forward, kind of what comes next is also pretty exciting. So clearly, there's infrastructure that needs to come next. There is kind of some parks and early thinking around the Green Loop concept that is coming next in partnership with our Bureau of Parks and Recreation and then the Portland Housing Bureau. So I'm going to go into a little bit more detail just to give you a sense of what you will see happening on the site over the next year. So our partners at the Bureau of Transportation have fully designed Johnson &amp; Kearney. So they will bid that project here this summer and then take the next couple of years to actually construct the project. They attend our Labor Management Community Oversight Committee, so they are already aware that this opportunity is coming. I would be remiss if I didn't also mention that the Bureau of Environmental Services and the Water Bureau is both partnering with our Bureau of Transportation to install utilities within the new, within the new streets. And then Portland Parks and Recreation, as I mentioned, they've brought onboard a landscape consultant who is looking at the design and eventually the build-out of the park that's right next to PNC A that eventually becomes the continuation of the North Park blocks into the site and ultimately the Green Loop. And then the Portland Housing Bureau does have out on the street a request for qualifications, had a chance to actually be part of their pre-submital meeting that was very well-attended by the development community. So I think there's a lot of interest of different affordable housing development partners being engaged with the project. They do have up to $60 million in available resources that spans both for kind of the construction, but also the operations of the affordable housing. The team that's selected through the RFQ, teams that are selected through the RFQ will then be invited to submit to an RFP process with construction to start in late 2025 or early 2026. Last but not least, we continue to have an exclusive negotiating agreement with Related, together with Melvin Mark, who has expressed interest in the potential mixed-use development to occur on the property. Their early focus is that parcel that is, or those parcels that are north of Northwest Johnson. As a reminder, Related and their partnership with Melvin Mark, they were the runner-ups to our request for qualifications back in 2018. So we approached them, they had continued interest, and we've been working with them for the past couple of years. And collectively, we'll continue to monitor the real estate market to determine kind of how feasibility is going in the downtown market. Clearly, it's kind of, there have been challenging times, that's continuing, but looking for light on the horizon. And then they've also been our kind of development advisor in working with the Portland Parks and Recreation, just knowing that the Green Loop will eventually go across privately-held property, wanting to make sure that it works both for the public as well as the connection onto the Broadway Bridge and further east. So happy to take questions about the project, happy to take questions about kind of the settlement information that Hope presented.
That was great. Thank you, Lisa and Hope. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I would just ask, Lisa, just, and I apologize, you kind of went through it very quickly, but just in terms of the timeline. So it'll be a couple of years to get the street work in and utilities, is that right? And then there's sort of the follow-on after that. So what's the big-picture timeline workout? Like a couple of years for infrastructure? And then, then we get into maybe breaking ground after that? And so on? Or how does that, where do you see it going?
Yeah, I think that's safe to say. I think that, so the infrastructure, imagine if we're in 2024. Street construction, they still have to bid. Street construction is going to probably take through to 2026, end of 2026, someplace in there. And then you could start to see development as soon as. It really will be dependent on Portland Housing Bureau's timeline for design permitting and construction. And if you allow a three-year window from today, I would imagine that's more like 2027 is when you're seeing kind of groundbreaking for a housing project. But if they hit, you know, the two years versus the three years, you could see something as early as the end of 2026.
Okay, great, thank you.
When is the projected finish for the entire project?
That's a great question. I mean, it really depends, you know, in areas like South Waterfront, where it's taken multiple phases of development. I could imagine it's 20-plus years for full build-out for kind of, you know, the, where you have all of the parcels that are, all of the nine to 10 parcels that are available through development developing.
Lisa, could you speak to the timing for the market rate portion?
Sure. I think, you know, the way, the conversations that we're having with Related right now are looking at, I would imagine, at the earliest, they will pursue a similar timeline to the housing. I would imagine it's probably going to take another year or two just because we would need to put together a funding package. They would need to put together a funding package, and so their design process would likely start more like a year from now.
Is it your sense that Related is pretty committed to being our long-term development partner?
Yeah, I think Related is, they're, they're very interested in the site. They've been actually doing work around some recruitment material as they think about the potential for anchor uses or anchor tenants. We've been working with them for the past couple of years, just looking at what the market dynamics are for market-rate housing or middle-income housing in downtown. Staying pretty closely connected with them about some of the changes that council has been looking at around housing production. I think the, the market-rate housing market in downtown is just really challenging. So I think they remain interested. I think if they, if there was a project that they could get financed tomorrow, they would do it. I think it's really about where their level of confidence is in getting financing for a mixed-use, multi-story, market-rate housing project in Portland. So it's more about the market dynamics than it is about the site. I think they really appreciate kind of the community benefits. I think they appreciate and are aligned with the vision. I think it's more just a challenge with the market right now.
Well, since we're doing it, will there also be low-income housing as well?
Yeah, maybe. So the Portland Housing Bureau, the first project that the Portland Housing Bureau will do will be about 200 to 250 units of affordable, regulated affordable housing, and they have to do it based, they're, they're aligning to kind of guiding criteria for how they partner with a development team. One is the Metro Bonds, because they're using Metro Bonds for it. The other is the, we negotiated certain goals tied to the community benefit agreement and really had to do with marketing and size of units. So there was a lot of interest in family-sized units. There was a lot of interest in marketing the units to communities that have historic connection to Old Town in particular and kind of the Union Station area. So Indigenous communities, the Black community tied to kind of Union Station, and then the Japanese-American and Chinese-American community. So I think they've included all of that information in their RFQ. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions or anything?
I just want to comment that, you know, the work that's been done to date is really, really complex and risky work. And it was being done in a really active area of our city, where there are people living and working and playing directly adjacent. I work in real estate development, and this project in particular was very, very risky and very complicated. And I think it's really noteworthy that we've been able to reach this milestone successfully while keeping everyone's safety in mind. And I really want to commend everyone who was involved in the effort. And I'm really looking forward to seeing this project come to fruition over the coming years. So excited to see the updates. Thank you.
I'll echo those sentiments. I mean, it's certainly a project of huge scope, and to pull things off successfully like this is certainly a tribute to everyone that worked on it. Super excited to see, you know, where, where it goes in the next few years. And so I know that this is sort of a big milestone that allows us to look ahead towards where it's going, but the progress to date has been impressive, so. Commissioners, look, point of view on that?
And I want to say a good big congratulations to the staff and the folks. I think it's really hard work. It comes at you hard and fast. But to be boots on the ground says really a lot about our staff and being out there handling those difficulties, no matter what. So I just want to say thank you to them. And the community relations and the partnerships that were built. It's very important.
Thanks for all those great comments. And I would just echo all those comments and say a few additional things with respect to the settlement. I just want to go back to that for a moment. I want to thank staff and our outside counsel and our insurance carriers and everyone else who worked on that. You know, there was no evidence of discrimination. It's difficult to settle this in light of the facts, but I think that this is the right decision. And I just want to say that I'm very proud of the work that Prosper Portland's been doing, and I feel very good about our ability to achieve the equity goals that we've set out. And I think that the numbers that Lisa shared with us today go a long way towards vindicating all of that and showing the great progress that we're making. And so I just want to thank everybody for their hard work and efforts on this. So, thank you.
To add to that, and shout out, I know we're not supposed to name names, but I want to shout out NWDD and Raymore. So many folks say that they can't reach the numbers, but this proves that they are wrong. Come together as a community, with staff, we can meet those numbers. And hopefully, we know that there's still more work to be done, but we're getting there and it's a start. But what they've done is just incredible, and I just want to say thank you and a shout out to them and everyone that has helped them along the way.
I agree. I, we voluntarily include utilization in our market rate projects, and it is really hard to hit even 40% or 50%. So 93% is just really above and beyond. So that is really tremendous work and really important work for our community. So thank you.
Can I just share? I, there's a story of like, so Wendy just shared, the person who kind of manages all of our, the LM-COC, but also kind of a lot of the compliance conversations with teams. And I just want to share a story, which is that the Raymore-NWDD team shared with her that there was a woman on site who said, "I have never had an experience like I had on this job site." And that is kind of the thing that makes folks kind of stick with a career, stick with a project and feel like there's a future. So I just, I think particularly both around kind of the opportunities that were unlocked for MBE and DBE firms. And I just want to highlight kind of the type of workplace that was created through the project and how they manage the project, I think is really critical.
Great, thank you. Thank you to everybody, really. Terrific job. Okay, well, Pam, do we have any testimony on this?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, if there's no further comments or communication between the commissioners, then if anybody would like to make a motion to approve the settlement, that would be great.
I so move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. All right, all those in the favor? All right?
Hi.
Great, everybody, it's unanimous then. Thank you so much. And thank you, Hope and Lisa. Okay. Okay, our next item today is a budget work session. This is item five. This is a work session for the 2024-2025 Prosper Portland Budget. And Tony Barnes, Lisa Abwaf, and Shay Flaherty and the team will present. And I understand that later in the presentation, James Paulson from Work Systems will also join us.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Executive Director, Random. I'm Tony Barnes, CFO. Happy to see you today for the budget work session for fiscal year 2425. We have a series of slides to work through, talking about the high-level budget as well as the process before us and the City General Fund, cannabis-related funds, the process that the Community Budget Committee has gone through today, and as well as the, an overview of the TIF action plans. So we'll touch upon where we are with those. We'll be before you later in the process with a lot more details as we work through the process. But I'd like to bring up the first slide, and we're joined by James Paulson, too, from the CBC, who will provide context from the CBC and recommendations that we went through over the last few weeks. So appreciate you being here. So for context setting, we have, the budget process is really grounded in Advanced Portland, the high-level agency work plan, our annual team, and individual work plans. That creates the annual budget. And of course, we report out metrics and how it comes on an annual basis to you and council and the community. This is also grounded within the context of the Financial Sustainability Plan. Next slide, please. And Advanced Portland is represented throughout the budget. There's going to be some key points throughout the budget we present today that link back to implementation of the plan and the objectives in the plan. So we'll be highlighting those points when we, when we move through the slides. Next slide, please. So the key budget changes and challenges can be summarized in these three points here. The inclusion of the new Boomerang resources that showed up in a budget note two years ago in the City Council budget. That's the returning tax increment resources, that total $8 million. It's roughly 25% of the returning tax increment that's forecast for next fiscal year from the expiring TIF districts. There is an equivalent amount included in the Portland Housing Bureau budget as well. But that's before, the next point, which is the 5% general fund cut. As part of the overall balancing of the city budget forecast for general fund, for resources, property tax resources, business license resources, and the implementation of the charter change, and looking at the different costs that would have to be incorporated in the city's budget. The City Budget Office has directed all bureaus in Prosper Portland to take a 5% constraint budget, build a 5% or 95% budget from what was anticipated originally. And that includes 5% off of the anticipated Boomerang funds. So that brings that $8 million down to about $7.5 million, which we'll talk about how that impacts the budget in the next few slides or later in the presentation. The other major issue here is volatility of the cannabis fund, the recreational cannabis tax fund. We are looking at a 22% reduction in funding from the cannabis tax fund that's being implemented in next year's budget. This is largely related to the volatility of the fund, declining tax revenues from cannabis tax over the last couple of years. So the City Budget Office at this point is anticipated to, anticipated to require a 22% cut. So that's what we're preparing for, and we'll show what those impacts are. And finally, there's the expiring TIF districts and implementation, continued implementation of the Strategic Investment Fund. So we'll identify what district status is for each district and a high-level draft expenditures where those investments are and those, how those investments tie back to the Financial Sustainability Plan. And with that, I think we can get into the next section here. So the next few slides focus on high-level process and high-level resources and expenditures. It's really early in the process still. There's been a lot of work. There's been a lot of drafting that's going into what's estimated. But we'll continue to refine estimates as we move through the process and bring you updated information. Next slide, please. So on this slide, this is a high-level picture of what the process looks like over the next few months. From November through January, we've been developing the budget with the help of the CBC and staff, working on revenues and expenditure estimates and working on some of these budget constraints that we have talked about around general funding and cannabis. It's a very different process this year compared to prior years with the charter change. In prior years, we brought a draft budget to City Council in March. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll be bringing a draft budget to City Council before we submit the draft budget on February 16th. So it's a little bit change in the cadence of how things are moving through the process. And then from that, we'll do some additional TIF district outreach in March and April, make some budget refinements, and provide you an update on what might be changing in the tax increment districts. And then the mayor will release the proposed budget at the end of April or beginning of May. And that will inform us what the mayor has put in the budget, including our general fund and finalizing the Boomerang estimates. And then we'll be before City Council one more time for action on the, on the budget. And then the budget's finally back before you in June for final adoption and with a hearing with the Multimount County Tax Supervising Commission as well. Next slide highlights our Community Budget Committee, 14-member committee, who participated in coming up to speed on the status of the budget in November, reviewing the TIF action plans and work plans, as well as having those conversations around programming the general fund and cannabis tax fund and the constraints within those budgets. And we'll talk about, again, some of those recommendations that, that staff and the Community Budget Committee worked on together. So this next slide is an early look at total resources for next year. It includes about $102 million in programming. That's net of the housing set aside. So that's spread across the tax increment districts, Strategic Investment Fund, Grants, Cannabis, General Fund, but also Property Income and Loan Income. And this compares it from the current fiscal year. So we have a big shift here showing from last year to this year in TIF district resources, and you'll see a corresponding change on the next slide. And that's mainly related to, to TIF district projects like Broadway Corridor, Old Town Action Plan, the timing of those projects. I'd anticipate some of that, some of those dollars to maybe slide into next fiscal year as not everything might get spent out this fiscal year. One of, a couple of things to point out here, the grants, the change in the grants represents really the one-time ARPA funds. Some of those dollars might be sliding over, too. We anticipate a We anticipate about $2 million coming over from fiscal year '23, '24 to '24, '25. But it really represents the big change in new resources from last year to this year in grants. Sorry, next year in grants. Next slide, please. This graph identifies how the $102 million is spent between different capital grant and lending programs, as well as total personnel and administration. So it's about 102 compared to about 200 million in the current year budget. But as noted, some of the TIF projects, mainly in that property investment and management category, will likely come over into next fiscal year, depending on timing. A little over 20% of planned expenditures are in personnel and administration that supports all the programs. It's a fairly similar level as the current fiscal year. However, some of those personnel costs are for programs that are much more personnel-intensive rather than capital. So there's not always that relationship between operations and capital of 20%. And so there's some TIF lending dollars that were available this year as well that might slide over into next year. So those are some of the things we'd like to present as we get later in the process. In the spring, we'll show how some of those dollars might be deployed next year instead. Next slide, please. So this graph summarizes, recaps, the status of all the TIF districts, all the current TIF districts and available resources. The blue portion of the bar chart are new TIF resources from Interstate, Gateway, North McAdam, and now Cully TIF districts that are declining over time, with the exception of Cully, which is growing over time slightly. By fiscal year 2829, that portion of the blue, that blue portion of the graph is just Gateway and Cully as far as new resources. The green portion represents fund balance, available resources that are being spent down as projects spend over time. And then shown kind of against that is how much is going towards the housing set aside and the admin allocation for staffing and administration specifically for the implementation of TIF districts. So we can see that housing set aside dollars are wrapping up in a lot of the districts. There's about $90 million left in total. They'll be transferred to the Housing Bureau over the next three years. And it's not really visible on this graph, but the admin portion, the yellow or gold line, has a pretty dramatic change, which we'll illustrate in the next couple of graphs, too, where we're really shifting away from the reliance on TIF districts to fund staffing and administration as those resources decline. Next slide, please. There's a lot of numbers on this slide. Not my favorite slide. But it's kind of hard to wrap this all up into a couple of graphs or one graph, the status of the housing set aside and how it's performing. And so this is illustrating City Council policy of 45% of tax increment resources dedicated to affordable housing set aside. But it's different district by district. The goals are different according to the city policy. You can see it ranges from 70% in Interstate, and then 32%, say, in Central East Side, or 33% in Gateway, averaging all out to about 45%. So what this is showing, that through, from the policy update in 2015 through this fiscal year, '23, '24, there's been close to $300 million spent on affordable housing from TIF dollars. And that's about 40% compared to the 45% goal. However, going through the end of the five-year, the next five-year forecast of fiscal year '28, '29, that number will be up to $384 million. So that's what's programmed into the TIF district budgets in five-year forecast to meet that 45% set aside. So just about $90 million more dedicated to affordable housing. And a lot of that is in the Interstate District, whereas other districts are wrapping up. I'm going to pause there for a moment. Slide, please. The next couple of slides focus on staffing and administration, how the agency is going to look at funding that over the next year. This slide shows what we call our staffing and administration, our operating budget, total positions, both full-time and limited term. About 87 actuals. Last fiscal year, this fiscal year, about 97. And about 94 program this year with several positions that are American Rescue Plan-funded that are in the budget, but funded through part of the fiscal year. So it's closer to 96 in total with those, with that funding. The total salaries budgeted around $12.4 million, and benefits around 6.4, 6.5. The benefits, or sorry, I start with the salaries. We have an assumption built into the budget around 2% COLAs, 3.5% step increases where applicable. And benefits include PERS contributions. Now, PERS are about 26% of every salary dollar. And health and dental benefits on top of that. So benefits in total are about 50% of salaries. There's also something called the PERS Pension Obligation Bond. That was an agreement Prosper participated with the City of Portland to help reduce our PERS rates in 1999. But it's about $1,001 per year in debt service that we need to absorb in our operating budget. But that does get paid off by fiscal year '28, '29. So it's, it will be expiring within the forecast. And then finally, administrative materials and services. This is what funds our facilities, systems, our ERP system, our training, our equity work, our community partnership work that benefits all of our programs are all rolled into these dollars. It was about $4.4 million this year due to some one-time projects. Our plan, our goal is around $4 million. So we have about $4 million programmed into next year's budget. There's a couple of major pressures on this budget. One is insurance. We had almost a doubling of insurance premiums this fiscal year for non-property-related insurance that's incorporated in this specific budget that we'll be looking closer at over the next few months to figure out what the forecast is for next year and what are some options to reduce or limit the amount of future increases in this budget for insurance. And another increase in here, which has been incorporated, is a doubling of our City General Fund overhead. Every bureau and Prosper Portland receives general fund overhead from the City of Portland for governance and other services. And that's been incorporated in here, and it's doubled because of the boomerang, the returning TIF. It's largely allocated based on a percent of general fund resources each bureau or Prosper receives. So that's been incorporated. So total operating budget around $24 million. That's spread across funding sources. Next slide, please. This slide shows of the '94, '96 staff, how they're funded. So a big change this year is the general fund, which incorporates the boomerang funds, shown in blue, where every department is allocating positions to support those, that work in the general fund for citywide work. It funds the vast majority of the Economic Development Department, but also funds a large portion now planned next fiscal year for the Administrative Services Department, Development Investment, Equity Policy and Communications, as well as Exec and Legal Departments. TIF, shown in green, is still a very prominent funding source, especially for the Development Investment Team, but less so than the current fiscal year or prior fiscal years. There's also some additional funding sources like the cannabis fund, which supports the Reimagine Program, as well as Inclusive Business Resource Network and Economic Development, as shown in gold there. Next slide, please. And one more staffing numbers for next fiscal year, the '94, shown by department, full-time positions versus limited-term positions. Limited-term positions have a specific date in which the project ends, the salaries and benefits associated with those, adding back up to that $18.9 million. That's in the budget in total. Next slide, please. This slide kind of sums up that shift in how operations are funded between TIF districts and general funding cannabis. Got things reversed here from the last slide, but general fund is shown in green and TIF districts in blue this time. But it shows the shift from TIF districts in the current fiscal year to that general fund cannabis and also the cannabis is, sorry, that's correct. The general funding cannabis is combined here in green. Other would be some other funding sources, including some one-time sources that we have. But the key takeaway here is that we really are highly dependent upon the boomerang resources, general fund resources to take, absorb the full cost of staffing and operations to support citywide programs starting next fiscal year. And next slide, please. Last slide of this section is just summarizing, and this is something I think we've illustrated a lot with the Financial Sustainability Plan, how operations are funded over time based on the Financial Sustainability Plan. So showing that shift from existing TIF districts as they expire, moving to general fund cannabis-funded programming. And the boomerang general fund really supports the '94 staff and operations for the next couple of years, but you can see there's a growing gap later in the forecast. And that gap is equivalent to what we talked about in the Financial Sustainability Plan around looking for return on investment from loans, as well as potential new TIF districts to support operations and deploying those projects into the future. And so a combination of those two resources would fill that gap longer term, starting mainly, starting in fiscal year '25, '26, but primarily in '26, '27. Pause there for a moment on the overview, and before I hand it off to, I think, Shay.
I might just chime in, because what you just saw was hundreds of hours of work. The result of hundreds of hours of work. You might recall from our retreat that we were talking conceptually about this, that we didn't yet have clarity on a number of the points. And, you know, the budget process is always a big lift. We have 26 funds and, I mean, probably more by now, but it's always complex. But basically, Tony, Courtney, and the team have had to re-establish the budget almost from scratch because we've had to redo the overhead model. And so I just want to pause for a second and appreciate that, the amount of work that's gone into it. And I think it does represent a better, or not better, it definitely reflects the value to the city as a whole about the kinds of services that we can provide outside of TIF districts. And so I think there's a great logic to it, and I think, you know, it's a sound approach, as well as, you know, it meets the needs that we talked about in the board retreat of getting to those, that 96 positions. And I'll just note that the difference between the '96 and the '94 is related to the 5% or rather 7% blended cut that you're going to see in this next phase. So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you very much, and definitely you're going to hear about this in the future. We're going to keep coming back to this. So I know it's a lot of information, but appreciate, just appreciate all the work that went into it. And if you have any questions, Tony and the rest of us are happy to. Please, yes.
I can't hear somebody speaking?
I was just asking, how are we going to fill those gaps? Because I heard a lot of maybes, but I didn't hear hardly any for sure's. And then where does that leave things if those gaps aren't fulfilled?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I think there's a lot of work happening right now to really move things forward with the input of community around the TIF exploration process. That's a really strong effort, taking a lot of staff time right now, focused with the community on what new TIF districts might look like and what the funding for new projects and programs might look like, and what that means for Prosper Portland to implement those things. So that, I think, will have more certainty over the next six months, next year. And how that might fit into this will be calculated more at that time. And then the other side of the equation is that Strategic Investment Fund, our loan portfolio, and looking at new loan products and programs and how those are deployed. There's a number of loans that are underway right now, that are being deployed over the last six months that actually are starting to fill that gap. So I think we're actually really on track when we look at the current fiscal year when it comes to lending activities. And we'll see how that moves forward over the next six months as well. Anything to add there?
Can I just, can I add to it, just because I think it's like from a, how is the work happening? It gets to the, literally, for every staff person who's bringing forward a property disposition or a loan at this point in time when we're going before CAFE, we're actually talking about how it aligns with that gap, as well as repopulating a pool of capital for placement. So we, every transaction is being lined up to the Financial Sustainability model. And if it doesn't align, we kind of talk about that at CAFE in terms of what are the trade-offs, just acknowledging that sometimes there may be a worthwhile community benefit that comes from it, but that every single transaction, every single property sales, every single loan is being considered in light of what's happening in that gap.
My other question's totally different. So I noticed, I didn't see anything about security because I know during the pandemic, we had to add security. So were those security costs included in the administration budget?
I didn't hear that. Yeah, thanks for that question. The, it's not specifically in that administration budget, but it's incorporated in the TIF district budgets where most of the property portfolio is. And so there's ongoing relatively higher level of security that we've had, say, five years ago. So it's incorporated, when we look at the TIF district budgets, there's a line item for property, and we'll have that built in.
Because I remember we had to add more security during the pandemic. So I want, has that gone up? Or has that kind of leveled back down, or where are we with that, or has it kind of balanced out?
I'll have to get back to you specifically on that question, but I think it hasn't necessarily gone down, except in the case where there's properties being disposed of. In those cases, we have brought some of those estimates out of the budget, where we're disposing a property. But I'll follow up with some of the change on those properties.
Thank you.
Go to the next slide. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Director Brannum. My name is Shay Flaherty-Batine. I use pronouns like he, him, and el, and I serve as the Director of Economic Development here at Prosper Portland. Before I start, I want to share again likewise huge appreciations for Tony and Courtney Cohen, who's right back here, as well as Robert Smith, Pam Neal, and Burke Nelson, who are the managers of our Act Dev Department, as well as their teams. Facing a cut year is a really painful process. And I want to applaud the team's patience, their creativity, and their resilience throughout the past few weeks of what's been a very accelerated process. Also want to thank our community partners who have been with that, been with us in those difficult conversations. If you go to the next slide. So as a brief reminder, on screen are the various Prosper Portland business lines that are funded by City General Fund and Cannabis Resources. The ones that are in blue are the various programs and partnerships that are within our Economic Development Department. As you'll see, many of our pandemic-era funded programs are close to fully expending those resources. And the business lines on screen reflect our best attempts to maintain those levels of service and build on the increased capacity we've had over the past few years. So these are our business lines for fiscal years '24 and '25. This is particularly important for our This is particularly important for our new Office of Events and Film, as well as for Business Navigation Resources that were stood up because of the COVID-19 pandemic. In green, you can see new business line, well, they're not new business lines, they're existing business lines across the rest of our agency that are now, for the first time, receiving portions of those returning TIF dollars that Tony's been mentioning, that are now newly part of the City General Fund. These include our Small Business Financing Programs, Grant Programs, Support for Middle-Income Housing, and Small Business Tenenting. A lot of those programs are in my colleague Lisa Abwaf's department, as well as the broader operational and governance supports that serve the entire agency. So all of those are now receiving City General Fund. If you go to the next slide. I just want to, again, just to get a sense of scale, this slide shows the depth as to what losing those one-time resources means for our department and for the agency. While our roughly 11 million of ongoing Economic and Workforce Development, General Fund, and Cannabis, those are facing cuts this year. It's relatively steady as you look at it, it's the green on the chart. The blue represents the millions in American Rescue Plan Act dollars that have now run their course, that have been supporting programs like the Small Business Hub, the Repair and Restore Programs, and Workforce Development Programming. You can see now how both returning TIF and what we were just speaking to, the performance in the Strategic Investment Fund, as well as our performance in the Enterprise Zone Program, all of those in purple really represent, and they play an immense role in maintaining our agency's operations. Go to the next slide. So this is the hard part. These are the cuts that we are having to absorb next year, and they are not insignificant. We have over 1.8 million in fewer General Fund and Cannabis dollars, and the conversations have been difficult and sobering. The proposals that you see on screen today would not be possible without the valuable community feedback and the guidance from our Community Budget Committee, and thank you, James, for being here today. The cuts, I will say, they would be felt even more deeply if it weren't for the team's collective creativity and partnership with the city to carry over one-time Cannabis Resources. That's really supporting and making it so that we can maintain staff in certain programs this year. But I really want to speak to the impact of these cuts. You can see the percentage to each program and different business lines. I think the 100% cut to the SEED Fund is particularly acute, but I want to get to the specific impact. So if we go to the next slide. So given that we are dealing with a 22% cut to our ongoing Cannabis Resources, that's immense, especially given that we know we received a lot of those resources in the past year from a transfer of programs and staff from the Bureau of Civic Life. The largest cut is to the Social Equity and Economic Development Grants, what we call our SEED Program. You'll recall that SEED came over to us as part of that same tranche of funding with Reimagine Oregon from the Office of Civic Life. SEED has been providing new grants to Portland nonprofits for one-time social equity projects. And I want to be really clear that we are still honoring those commitments. And there was our existing multi-year grant agreements. And so we'll still be dispersing those in the coming year for those current recipients. But this means that we will no longer have the ability to do new grant rounds moving forward. So effectively, it's a sunsetting of that program. One silver lining that we just want to put out there is that we know that the Reimagine Oregon Program will likely be able to serve many of the same organizations that have received SEED Fund. A lot of our long-term partners have also received SEED Funds. And thankfully, the Reimagine Program's receiving a modest cut. The other silver lining here is that we will be able to retain the staff person that has come over from the Bureau of Civic Life, and we'll be able to pivot their existing work towards serving directly Prosper Portland's, or the City of Portland's Cannabis Industry with new Prosper Portland capacity to do that direct service, which we know there's lots of opportunity, even though there's dynamics in the market that are hard. It represents a new effort to directly align services in that sector with the Cannabis Resources. Both our ongoing partnerships with Work Systems, Inc. and Venture Portland are reduced by 7%. And with those reductions in terms of the impact are reflected in a reduction in partner operations and what we hope to be a modest reduction in support for job seekers. Though we are heartened and we're excited that returning TIF has allowed us to keep some capacity for the new Office of Events and Film, and so you can see there is still a cut reflected there. For us currently, that means that we won't be able to continue serving as that concierge for large-scale events and doing large-scale event recruitment. That really has been helpful for us to recruit events at a national level and pursue some of those bigger impacts. We still are maintaining a base level of service navigation, which has been the real successful part of the Film Office. We're retaining some capacity there for events as well as for our own activations, things like My People's Market, the Ice Rink, which has been really well-received. So keeping a base level of support, knowing that we might have other resources come online from potential partnerships, we'll speak to those. I'm also very grateful that we will be able to move forward with the two small business liaison, the limited-term positions you see on screen. This is a key goal for us. It's, as Tony mentioned, a lot of this is building on our Advanced Portland Plan. And so a key part of that, and there's a frequent call in that document and externally, to establish an Office of Small Business. And given that a lot of our capacity with the Small Business Hub is currently sunsetting with ARPA, we are hopeful that these two small business liaison positions can start laying the groundwork for a full new Office of Small Business at Prosper Portland. Lastly, I'll just note, our entrepreneurship and community economic development team hopes to absorb the 5% cut to the Inclusive Business Resource Network that you see on screen in ways that will hopefully reduce the impact to our long-term partners and have minimal impacts on the number of clients. But generally speaking, I think this, what you see here reflects really tough conversations and really good creativity on the part of the teams and our partners. So it's been a tough few weeks, and I'm grateful we got to where we are today, given the circumstances. If we go to the next slide. So I do want to call out some hard truths that we will continue to communicate to our city partners as we get closer to next fiscal year. While we are able to carry over some ARPA funds for the first half of next fiscal year, there will be no new funding for Repair and Restore, which my colleague Lisa's team has been able to deploy. It's been sadly, very successful program, given the state of our city, and that's something we just need to continue to call attention to. Likewise, like I said, we're able to maintain that core functionality for the Events Office, but the reduction in materials of service and materials of services is substantial. We received over $1.5 million over the last few years for those community event grants for hosting activations across the central city, like every Wednesday and the Ice Rink. So we don't expect to be able to provide those community event grants next year unless something changes. We are hopeful that maintaining, like I said, this baseline capacity will allow us to continue partnering, and we're in talks with organizations like Travel Portland who'd like to continue funding efforts like the Scale Up, which really is, the Scale Up Program is providing resources to event producers who are really on the cusp of having that bigger regional pool or even a national pool, so they're able to scale up their operations from a lot of the community events that we know Portlanders love. But we really want to see more folks coming into the city. We want to see folks using the hotel capacity we have and just really getting our regional, all of our suburban, regional families and others to come back into Portland. So that's going to be a big focus. Lastly, though the Enhanced Service Districts and the Spectator Venues Program are moving into our newly-formed City Service Area, we are aware there is a chance that the ESD Program could come over to Prosper Portland as soon as January 1st, 2025, in alignment with the city's restructuring. Next slide. Just a couple graphs and before I hand it off to Lisa. Here you see the total cost and the operations of our citywide economic development programs. I want to particularly call out that even though this now shows, I think Kimberly's right on, when we are now able to show the City of Portland the full cost of administering these programs, especially given now the returning TIF and how General Fund is laid out throughout these business lines, I think we're proud and want to call out the fact that 19 million out of 30 million are going out the door in the form of contracts and grants for our community partners. And so, exciting if we go to the next slide. And specifically with regards to the full cost to each of these programs, you can see how much returning TIF is coming into each business line here. That is relatively in line with what we could consider that TIF administrative funds were previously providing as a subsidy in support of each program. So you can see for things like our Business Advancement Team, IBRN, our NPN Program, previously TIF administrative dollars were supporting our staffing in those areas. And now you have new General Fund going into other business lines across the agency. So it's great. I think it paints a more complete picture of our programs and what we do across the city. And I know despite all these challenges and despite, you know, the cuts, I think it shows us putting our best feet forward and still continuing to show up for our city in our recovery. So I think that's the end of our section.
Excuse me. Hi, my name's James Paulson, and I'm the Board Chair for Work Systems, Inc., and I'm on the Community Budget Committee. I have been for some time. First thing I want to say about the Community Budget Committee is a big thank you to the staff for all of their preparation and education for those of us that serve on that committee. We know it's a lot of information to get to people like me that are outside of the realm of public budgeting. And so it's with this, the long-term experience with this committee has really helped to really have true understanding of kind of how the levers work. And also getting to know, like when you see the slide of the variety of people that are on that committee, I mean, it's from every spectrum up and down and indifferent. But really bringing that group together so that we all have a consistent understanding of how it works. And so what that's really allowed us to do is have kind of a deeper conversation, because when everyone's advocating for their different areas, mine workforce, of course, but understanding, going into the work with, I understand, you know, what different groups, let's just say, the small business, what their needs are and how we can balance those things. And so we're not really in a siloed, I only want mine, because we understand the bigger picture. And this year being a more challenging year because we have cuts and really understanding what those cuts are and what they mean. And, you know, it's not just this one budget. And as you've seen today, there's going to be cuts on the horizon for the foreseeable future, which only makes it more difficult on how these more limited funds are going to go out into the community. And what I've really seen is the people that are on this committee being able to move forward and share their experience and the experiences of the organizations in which they represent and helping us understand like those impacts, you know? On the workforce side, we're not going to be able to support programs and clients. On the business side, we need to support small businesses. All of these things are all so very important. And so instead of kind of pitting one of us against the other, we're able to focus our energy on the problem. And the problem is budget cuts. And so when you see the budget that was presented, where we were able to come to agreement on those different cuts and so forth, that is not what we walked into the room looking at. But that's where we're able to go as a group. And I think we were able to do that because of the relationships that we've built and the fact that we were really armed with really good information from the staff. And it's just been extremely important for us to have that space to get together to come to these hard decisions. So thanks for that.
James, I just want to say thank you so much for your longtime service. It's really important, and I think you really helped to set that tone for the collaboration. And so just thanks so much for continuing and thanks for being with us today. Really appreciate it.
I thank you all, but I do have some questions. And you all have done, I know doing this is really hard, believe me, I understand. But I do have some questions. So with the 100% cut in the SEED Fund and the 9% cut in the Reimagine Fund, how many, how many folks can reimagine truly take on? And what's going to happen? And I know you're rolling out of that, but is there any backup for those things?
We're going to invite my colleague Chabri Vickers up to answer Reimagine, and I'll just say, throughout this process, we really worked closely with Justice Raji and others to minimize the impact to that program, acknowledging the history of what it's been through. I don't know if you want to build on that, Chabri?
Yeah, thank you so much, Shay. Good afternoon, Chabri Vickers. Director, sorry, I was not even thinking about talking about that. Director of the Equity Policy Communications Department here. You asked about how many groups Reimagine could support or kind of absorb?
Right. How many could they possibly absorb, especially with them taking the 9% cut too, and especially everything that has happened up to this point, but also with the 100% cut of the SEED Fund, you know? And I don't know if there's any other programs that could pick up after that.
Yeah, I think one of the things that Shay and leaders across the team here recognized when SEED came over is there was a lot of duplicative groups that we have already been working with. So there are many partners with regard to SEED that Prosper, prior to Reimagine, had already been working with and are engaged with either through IBRN or other things, specifically in Shay's department. Their way, and we'll be bringing the Reimagine Oregon Guidelines to you all in a few weeks at your board meeting on the 14th, so more to come there. We also saw that there were some similar organizations that would likely qualify and be a part of who we anticipate applying for Reimagine Oregon Grants. And with the sheer amount of, like, you know, Reimagine always had a much larger allocation than SEED did. SEED was about 1 million, Reimagine is about 1.9 million. The cut overall means there will be a lessened amount to that. However, the way that we set up the budget so far really allowed for the cut that's even occurring to Reimagine to not be something that external community would recognize from, with regard to grants or things that were made available. We, because of all the cut to ARPA, we really looked forward to particular programs within Prosper that were ARPA-supported to have some kind of back support through Reimagine dollars. That portion of the budget is what's kind of, you know, lessening. So we knew ARPA was going away. We thought Reimagine could help support, and it will, but at a much lesser scale. So the good thing is, community, there was no promise or understanding that that, you know, that was kind of like a goal, like a really nice-to-have. That nice-to-have is simply lessening. And so we don't anticipate it being a major cut, and because Reimagine is coming new to us, simply new opportunity. And with that higher ongoing amount allocation, we anticipate some of those programs being able to flow in easily and really probably even expanding because the economic opportunity piece that you all will see in the guidelines is really meant to open up creativity of those partners versus what may have been constrained with regard to previous grants and however SEED was run in the past. I hope that answers your question.
It does, and I have one more question. On the, for the storefronts, we're not going to be doing any of that anymore. So is there other places within the city? Because there's still, there's still things happening with the storefronts. So has that balanced out or has it gotten worse or is it getting better? Is that one of the reasons why we decided to do that as well, especially for the small business owners?
So we're seeing...
I might have been repeating that wrong, but...
Can I just start really high level? So the Restore Repair Grants have been funded through ARPA funding. And so that sort of started with CARES, but really it's been ARPA-funded. And so, you know, as you know, the ARPA funds can only be spent through calendar year 2024. And so I think we believe that we have, so we'll be able to carry over about 1.6 million of those funds, and that should take us through December. So people won't see a decline in service until December. I think one of the reasons we're calling attention to it is because it is such a high need, that if there were any one-time funds that became available, for example, if, you know, if the forecast exceeds, I could imagine that council might do what it was doing before we got the ARPA allocation, which was giving us like tranches of $300,000 to do basically the repair grant. So I think we have continued to hope that we wouldn't need the program anymore. But the good thing is we have the capacity, like with the film grant, we have the capacity in the staff so that if we get 100,000 or a million or what have you, that we can deploy it. And so, you know, we have seen over the years, Tony can speak to this, that oftentimes forecasts do, or performance outperforms forecasts. And so I think we want to be really transparent with city council decision-makers about the impact so that they're not surprised and that if there are in the fall bump, any additional resources that they could help us repopulate that.
Thank you, and I do appreciate all the work that you offer then. I know doing a budget and audits is just a lot. So thank you all for your hard work. And thank you, James, for coming today and speaking. I really appreciate it.
Commissioner, we appreciate the questions because there's a lot of care that's gone into it, so thanks for asking.
I wanted to just echo the sentiment of my colleagues and just how much effort has gone into this. And I know that sharpening pencils and going through budgets and having difficult conversations, you know, aren't necessarily reflected sort of in the confidence that you've, you know, kind of presented this today. So again, I know that there are probably a number of... So again, I know that there are probably a number of difficult conversations and dialogue that that had to happen in order to to come up with this plan, which which we appreciate. I'm just curious from like the perspective of the the prosper workforce, if consideration has been given, just knowing some of the budget cuts, how the organization might pay attention to just staff morale and teamwork dynamics, you know, sort of given given the backdrop, you know, both from sort of the quantitative side, like are there are there models around, you know, maybe an attrition rate that might be higher than normal? But more importantly, I think from a qualitative perspective, just checking in with folks and creating opportunities for people to have visibility into, you know, what might be opportunities for either, you know, career advancement because people have to wear more hats and sort of lean times, or just being able to celebrate the small wins that might come from a smaller workforce. So curious from both a quantitative and qualitative perspective, efforts made to kind of plan for keeping keeping folks going amidst the cuts.
So I think I'll just first start with, you know, we we really practice transparency and open communication. So and sometimes we feel like maybe like too much that staff is like, we've heard, we've heard it. But I do, but but that's a first start. So nobody heard the information about any impact to their team or their jobs, you know, just at all staff presentation. So our managers, our directors have been having individual conversations to make sure that people understand the why and understand, you know, that these these aren't final decisions at this point, right? So these are just possibilities. So I think that's part of it is just is that and just really working through the budgets and increasing awareness. I think that we are as a team having a lot of conversations just around morale and how do you keep spirits up, particularly considering how busy things are right now. The fever pitch is it's it's just it's a really intense time period. And so I think we all feel like there's a lot more room for celebration. There's a lot more room for doing the kinds of things that make people feel, you know, connected. And, you know, really appreciate Chabri and Sean for weekly team meetings, or sorry, weekly all-staff meetings for our in-person meetings. Those are great boosts to team building, but there's definitely more to do. And so I think we're all hopeful that on the other side of February 16th, that we'll have a little room to like do that, you know? But please keep asking because it's really important. And other, please.
Yeah, I just want to add, I think, you know, a people-centered management approach can go for miles. And to a certain extent, staff who have been through this year over year have a certain amount of resilience built into the budget process. But I think middle managers are the unsung heroes of any organization. And we are fortunate to have one of the best management teams, especially our middle managers that we've ever had. And just the empathy that they lead with, the way they show up for their teams, I've it's personally just extremely rewarding to see that every day. And yeah, right on, just being able to be real with staff. I think the other the other side is as you see the impact to the budget. And I think we're less, hopefully, knock on wood, less concerned with attrition, but we are being transparent with staff whose limited term employment is ending, at the same time trying to create those opportunities like the small business liaisons where we have capacity that's going down, hopefully presenting new opportunities for folks to apply to.
I just build on that. Like I also want to, I totally agree with Shay's comment of kind of middle managers are often kind of the folks who are really holding this space to make sure that staff feel supported. I also think we have incredibly passionate staff. So when we hold these conversations at all staff, it looks more like, how do I go get more money for my project? Who else can we go talk to? Right? Like, that's the tenor of the conversation, which is pretty incredible because it really tells you how much people care about the work that they do and really like take it to heart as well as to the head, right? Like, it's literally, that's the tenor. When we hold a conversation, folks are like, okay, tell me, can I go chase this opportunity or that opportunity? Like, so that's, I think, in general, if I gave you a sense of what's happening within the agency, that's more the tone of it.
Thank you. Really appreciate that.
It's really hard to take very complicated things and the materials that I reviewed prior to the meeting versus the presentation. It was so simple and clear, and I know that takes extra work. So I really appreciate that and want to share my appreciation for the team for being able to present it in such a clear and concise way. I am pained to bring this up, but I am, this kind of begs the question, we've obviously seen cuts happen this year. We all have concerns about our tax base generally at the city. Is this a conversation that we have begun thinking about whether it's going to be a conversation we're having again in a year? And is there a broader conversation amongst the bureaus and the city generally about the strategy for what our critical areas of focus are that we maintain in order to try to bring economic growth and development back to our city in a way that will help us not have to have budget cut conversations? I don't know if that's already started, but I'm curious to hear that. It's a it's a really good question, and I'll share a couple thoughts and folks should chime in. So I think one thing is that, you know, locales across the United States were really supported through ARPA and through CARES before it. And so I think there was a lot of, like, we knew, I think we received something like $18 million of additional one-time funding last year. And so the team did an excellent job in identifying those things which really were more short-term, right? But that is being felt across and and it also backfilled for lost revenue that was experienced during the pandemic. So that helped to support, you know, just the increase in need and demand for just all of the things that the pandemic created and without having the reduction in tax base that was experienced at the time kind of be fully felt. Without the federal funds, you know, the city's in a tough spot, the county's in a tough spot. And so I think this is something that we have been both anticipating and worried about. And it's accentuated by the fact that the city is also going through the new form of government transition. And so there are a lot of costs associated with that. And I think we all believe over the longer term that it's likely to reduce some costs and that there will be efficiencies that are created. But in the near term, we are seeing a good portion of the 5% ongoing cut is related to the need to find tens of millions of dollars for one-time and ongoing resources associated with the change in government. Because you have the need to build out the, you know, city hall in a new way. You now have 12 council members instead of five council members and the associated staff. You now have a city administrator, you have six deputy city administrators, and all of those have costs that are associated with that. And so that is being pushed into the overhead model. And so that's impacting level of service delivery throughout. So some of it is based on like a reduction in property taxes or not a reduction in property taxes, a slowing of growth of property taxes, and some of it is a slowing of growth of business license taxes. But the places that are most immediately feeling it are things like the gas tax, our permitting revenue, right, which are most closely tied to the economic trends, whereas the property taxes, it's just, it's a slower, it's slower to be impacted. So all of that to say that I think there have been a lot of conversations, and it's part of the reason why city council said you have to take the 5% cut and there are no, you can't ask for any money, you can't ask for any decision packages that are not associated with the change in government. That's really the focus. So city council has been clear that the focus is the change in government and making sure that that's successful, supporting economic recovery, supporting community safety, supporting livability. And, you know, so so those are the kinds of things that they're asking as they're looking at the ways in which each of us are taking cuts. But I am hopeful that as we get into the service areas and continue to be in service areas, that we can have more of a citywide approach. What are the things that are driving economic activity? How do we increase the tax base versus, you know, each bureau having kind of its own perspective? I think that's going to take a little bit of time, but I think the even just having the conversations and as Tony was mentioning, being able to put together the budget alongside Bureau of Development Services, the Housing Bureau, planning and sustainability, there's just a lot of value in us having the conversations and identifying that housing production is a top priority, climate action is a top priority, economic recovery is a top priority. And so in terms of change management within our service area, we have identified that the top priority is the consolidation of permitting and improving the permitting process because that is key to unlocking some, you know, ultimately development. So, you know, not there yet, but definitely it's an active conversation.
Great. Do you have any other questions or comments?
Karen, do we want to take a three-minute break between, we're now we're going to go into the TIF districts? I'm wondering if commissioners would like to take a three-minute break between?
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
What?
I'm just, my precision is not being appreciated. I'm sorry. Should we get started? Do you want to, are we good?
Yeah, I think it just takes a moment for.
Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, chair and commissioners. I'm Lisa Abwaf, Director of Development and Investment. I use she/her pronouns. What we're gonna do is just provide like a little bit, we are not diving deep into numbers today. We're just gonna kind of do a reminder of the context for our tax increment finance investments and our investments in our tax increment districts, what guides them, et cetera. So, next slide, Justin. So, before we jump in, as you see individual district budgets, what you'll note is we really have budgets at different places in their lifecycle. So, we have tax increment finance districts like Airport Way or South Park Blocks or the Convention Center where really we have spent all of our resources, the majority of our resources. We may have assets remaining, and so we're kind of really focused on how do we either dispose of those assets or care for them over the long term by moving them over into a strategic investment fund, but they're largely closed out from a community perspective. In the middle bucket, we have areas like the Downtown Waterfront and River District, TIF districts, that cover Old Town and Broadway Corridor or Central East Side and Lentz, where 100% of our resources are kind of spoken for and committed. And so, it's really talking about what are the trade-offs? If we choose to move resources from one line item to another based on what we're hearing from community, but there's not a whole lot of flexibility because we've really committed those through action plans or particular projects. And then the final bucket of areas are those areas where we have resources available. As Tony mentioned, we either have kind of significant resources in the near-term area like Gateway or North McAdam, or in fact, we have growing resources in areas like Cully. And so, there's a lot more flexibility and creativity that can be brought to bear when we're working with community in terms of allocation of funds and opportunistic investments. Next slide, Justin. I'm just gonna, this slide really reflects that same notion, but in geographic form, and use it to highlight that really where you see areas in gray are those areas that we are holding very healthy conversations about new tax increment finance exploration. So, that is the central city, that is East Portland, that ultimately would have kind of the Gateway area for ongoing investment. So, we're really thinking about how do we think about areas along Columbia Corridor or east, all the way to the Gresham Boundary, as well as our central city core, to think about how tax increment finance, if it's supported by community, can be used as a tool for affordable housing, as well as economic development into the future. So, when we look at this slide, this slide kind of does a really high-level roll-up across all of our tax increment finance funds. So, imagine we have 10, 11 of those funds. This rolls it up by categories. So, what you see is we have resources available for lending. We have resources available for grants and infrastructure. We have resources available for property investments that includes both acquisitions, as well as redevelopment. And then we have resources available for property management. And what this slide really indicates is from kind of a capital resource perspective, we have reducing resources, which is why it becomes really important that we are intentional about how we place kind of the closeout of our tax increment finance resources. The last thing I would highlight, I think Tony included this on our earlier slide, is in fact, about 50% of the resources that we have committed in our tax increment finance districts is in fact program income and not tax increment finance constrained. So, it has to be spent within the district. It's kind of, it's committed to that TIF district area, but it can be more flexible in how we spend those resources because it is program income. Next slide, Justin. So, at a high level, really kind of the majority of the funds that you saw on the previous slide, by kind of category of investment, now I'm gonna dive into how does that show up in each of our communities that we're working in? And the majority of those are committed through action plan. Action plans that we've put together with the community, and this is just a reminder of the four action plans that we have kind of as ongoing commitments to community. Again, similar to the tax increment finance resources, those action plans are at very different places of kind of their own life cycles. So, in Old Town, we made an initial commitment of $57 million back in 2014. We have a pretty significant amount of resources committed. I'm very happy to say I think we have a very healthy pipeline of potential projects in the district, both on properties that Prosper Portland owns, but we're also seeing kind of an increased interest around kind of conversions or new development coming from the market. But they will take a really sizable investment for middle-income housing to occur in Old Town. So, just honoring that, but definitely have a healthy pipeline this fiscal year, budgeted into next fiscal year for neighborhood investment, business vitality, and district livability. In the Lentz five-year action plan, we made an initial commitment of $36 million. The majority of those resources are spent. What you will see as kind of remaining resources, we continue to kind of make sure that the Lentz Town Center is stable, that it's a mixed-income kind of community. And so, you'll see a proposal for investments in the Lentz Town Center, as well as on some resources for, as we close out, for our small business grant dollars, which we have seen demand for along the corridors. In the Gateway action plan, very different from what I just described in terms of Old Town and Lentz. In the Gateway action plan, we made an initial commitment of $35 million. There's actually an additional $38 million that is available. That happened when we were able to hit maximum indebtedness in the district. So, our staff in that district have been doing pretty robust community engagement process to say, what are your priorities? What do you want to see kind of as the new framework for investment of those additional resources? That should be coming before the board for consideration, kind of an updated Gateway action plan in the next few months. We anticipate that we will probably be moving away from just a geographic base and move more towards what you see in the other action plan areas. Things like, we really want to see small business assistance, or we really want to celebrate kind of the diversity in immigrant community of Gateway. And so, we are starting the conversation with the community to make sure that we're allocating our funds in our proposed budget for next year in alignment with those action plan update conversations. And then in North Northeast, our initial commitment was for $32 million. There's an additional about $19 million available of additional resources that occurred when the Housing Bureau kind of pursued, because they were, they had fully expended their funds, an increase in maximum indebtedness. Similarly, I think we're really excited. We have the Cultural Business Hub. Our FEI is kind of out on the street, super excited to see the proposals that come in on that, and that may kind of guide where those additional resources are allocated in partnership with the guidance for the North Northeast Leadership Committee. Next slide. So, this dives into kind of the next level of detail of what I just described, kind of at a high level. So, in Old Town, as we're thinking about our 18-month priorities for the coming fiscal year, and again, kind of this is just setting the stage. We're not doing this in numbers. Very often, when we're doing engagement within our TIF district areas, we do it from the, what are your priorities? And then we start to allocate the funds to the programs and the line items at the scale that feels like community can support them. So, in Old Town, clearly, new market rate, middle-income housing continues to be a priority for the community. I think this became very clear coming through the pandemic that Old Town needs kind of a balance in terms of housing income, as well as ongoing support for its small businesses. So, that's where you'll see the majority of our resources committed is in our loan dollars to support middle-income housing, as well as our grant dollars to support some of our nonprofit community, our small business community and tenant. Clearly, Broadway Corridor in the River District is also a key component. We're really at closeout mode. The majority of our tax increment finance resources have gone to some of the site preparation work that I discussed with you earlier. Also excited to see the construction of Johnson and Kearney, and also thinking about the design for the future of the park in Green Loop. We'll continue to do that. That is largely being funded through our bureau partners or other funding mechanisms, like a local improvement district or other resources. In that, in that district, we do own Union Station. So, I think it's also kind of a healthy conversation. We carry kind of property management costs related to Union Station to think about what is the future of that asset, given the TIF district is closing out. Bye, Justin. So, in Lentz and Gateway, clearly, market rate housing and making sure that housing production can continue in, at the Lentz Town Center is really key. What we're seeing in Lentz is similar to what I described for the central city, which is we have fully permitted projects or projects that were on their way to being fully permitted, and the financing froze up. So, we are kind of stepping in to say, hey, how can we make sure kind of that that project continues? And both to the benefit of the community and to deliver on what we committed to with community in terms of the Lentz Town Center, but also to get to Kimberly's point earlier on for housing production purposes. And then also, we do have, we own Lentz Commons. Tenenting of the ground floor has been really challenging there with retail. So, I think we just want to make sure that we continue to be good stewards of that asset and think about how we can activate the ground floor of that space. What kind of resources is that gonna need as this TIF district closes out? And then, again, the small business needs along our commercial corridors. In Gateway, you just approved, kind of we have a partnership with Madomy and David Douglas. So, those are resources that you'll see ultimately will go out. Probably the majority of them will go out next fiscal year, so that continues to be a priority. We are actively teneting the Nick Fish. Particularly, what I would call out is that we have, we've made both kind of, we've made tenant improvement investments, capacity building investments in a childcare provider. That's gonna be great synergy with the Discovery Park next door. And then, again, starting to use the updated action plan to help inform budget priorities going forward. In North Northeast, this slide kind of highlights where we see both the original commitment and staying true to the original commitment that we made through the North Northeast Community Development Initiative, and then additional ideas of where some of that additional maximum indebtedness can go. So, per the North Northeast Action Plan, a commitment both via grants and loans to support small business and property owners through direct financial support. We are launching new property ownership and redevelopment loans that should support everything from pre-development to construction phase, to actually even acquisition, because there are a few program income dollars in North Northeast that could be used to support that with, once the new loan programs are approved by the board. As I mentioned, the Cultural Business Hub continues to be a priority. We anticipate there could be demand for more resources and more investment than was originally anticipated in the, in the original action plan. And then, I have also launched the Affordable Commercial Program per the program guidelines that were approved. We're thinking about it as kind of a pilot tied to the Cultural Business Hub, but there could be additional resources and teneting grants if there was, if the community wanted to allocate some of that maximum indebtedness to the Affordable Commercial Program. Kind of connected, but separate from the North Northeast Action Plan, we are continuing our discussions and support for the Williams and Russell CDC and the Williams and Russell Project. We are moving that project along, together with the CDC and with the commercial developer, which is led by Andre, who also has Lever and Colis on, as part of the development of the Black Business Hub. They really are completing kind of a phase of work that's tied to site, site pre-development. So, understanding what's on the site, thinking about what's needed for the land transfer from Legacy over to the CDC. Our dollars would go into pre-development, starting the design on the Black Business Hub, which is envisioned as kind of the commercial asset that ultimately the CDC would continue to hold. And then, the Housing Bureau is holding kind of a parallel conversation with some of the set aside resources, interstate around affordable housing. And that project would be led by PCRI on the property. Next slide, Justin. So, I think last but not least is also the Central East Side and South Waterfront. So, the first couple of bullets are the Central East Side. The last couple of bullets are South Waterfront or the North McAdam TIF District. So, in the Central East Side, we are, we are in ongoing conversations with Beam and Colis, who are pursuing pre-development of the Live Nation Project on the Workshop Blocks, which is kind of in and around the center of the district. We're also partnering with OMSI on implementation of their master plan, particularly as they participate in the new TIF district exploration process and kind of knowing that their plan is really a 30-year build-out plan, kind of what can be funded out of either a current Central East Side TIF district into a future potential TIF district. And their primary focus is on New Water Avenue, construction of New Water Avenue, which is critical to both providing utilities for the millions of square feet that could build out over the next 30 years, but also it realigns the street and creates developable parcels. So, you'll see that as a sizable budget line item in the proposed budget. In South Waterfront or the North McAdam TIF District, we are holding ongoing conversations with Portland State University. We actually have a development agreement with Portland State University that goes back to the kind of last time we amended the district to bring in some of their properties. They, we are supporting them through a contribution to the relocation of the Portland State Business Accelerator. They're moving out of kind of the southern end of the district more to the core campus. And then also, they are actively pursuing University Place redevelopment right now. It's focused on, they submitted for the Keller Auditorium relocation. I think they're pretty excited about what could happen on their University Place site. And then, the other big item, when we went to the South Portland Neighborhood Association last year, we heard pretty loudly that they were interested in some of our small business grants and community livability grants. So, this would be the first year that that really gets launched and gets going. I think they're interested in things like lighting. They have some pedestrian accessways that kind of span under different highway systems. And they're like, can we put lighting in? So, I think those are the kinds of projects they're really interested in, and also wanting to make sure that we don't lose sight of the infrastructure priorities that they've longstanding kind of asked us around. Build out the Greenway, build out Southwest Bond, build out the South Portal. So, with that, oh, I have one more, Justin. One more. So, this is like a pause. So, I might actually just pause there around tax increment finance districts, because this thing goes into the Strategic Investment Fund. See if you have any questions around tax increment finance. Again, we'll be back to you with specific numbers. Each fund has its own numbers and kind of its own budget allocation, but it felt important just to share what's the framework with how we're thinking about our investments and where are we in thinking about priorities for the coming year.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
So, this last slide really has to do with the Strategic Investment Fund. I think you heard this, Tony spoke to this, and the critical role that it plays, both from kind of being able to invest citywide in community priorities, but also to the financial sustainability of the agency. So, you've seen this slide before. We have refined and are just presenting to you how we're thinking about the investment priorities within each bucket. So, we've always talked with you about the Strategic Investment Fund being placed in two major investment types. One is increasing access to capital, to private and community partners. And the other is making sure that we are being good stewards of our assets and we're kind of, whether that's via a teneting perspective or a net operating income perspective. So, that continues to be the framework by which we are investing our Strategic Investment Fund dollars. We are, we have further kind of allocated at a line item level our Strategic Investment Fund financial assistance dollars. So, we're thinking about how are we supporting small businesses, either through operating loans or tenant improvement loans? And then also did some further thinking about how are we supporting small businesses through TIs relative to doing acquisition lending or middle-income housing lending? And so, you'll start to see those as line items with allocated resources. And then, we're continuing to hold a reserve for our operating assets, really thinking about the end of the Convention Center and knowing that that is a decision that will be coming before the board in terms of that asset. And are we holding it, are we disposing of it? And if we're holding it, we really need to kind of put some resources into the status of that asset. Now, questions?
Thank you for that. That was a great overview. I was curious if Prosper was playing a role in seeing if we can leverage funds from the state or at the federal level to support OMSI and some of the other larger efforts that are happening in the city?
Yes, you, do you, okay. I think we are pursuing both and. So, the opportunities that are at the state level right now is there's state legislation tied to housing production that's moving through. And we made a specific request tied to the site infrastructure. So, there's kind of a line item that has been part of a package that the governor brought forward, that the state legislature is considering. That package is moving on an hour-by-hour, day-to-day basis, but we made a request for both Broadway Corridor and OMSI in support of the infrastructure that would then kind of support housing production occurring. So, we can certainly provide an update. Once that lands, we can provide an update and how that has, that informs our TIF district work. And then, on the federal side, we're doing the same. So, there's kind of, in terms of kind of earmark process, we have put OMSI in as a list, as a potential project for earmark process. I don't know if there's. I was not joking when staff will come forward and be like, what about this source? What about that source?
Well, and Commissioner, it's a really, it's a really timely question because there are so many federal funds that have been made available. And so, there are competitive resources, and they seem to be, you know, they're kind of going through the process of they were an idea, and then they have their program rules, and then they're going to be deployed. And so, we are working very closely with the Office of Government Relations. So, just to make sure that we have a sense of what those opportunities are and then what might best align, so.
I would be remiss, we're also thinking about it from our assets perspective, particularly for Union Station and a partnership, just given the scale of investment that's gonna be needed for that asset.
What happened with the Amtrak transfer of Union Station? Have we had any new developments on that?
We are still in active conversations. I don't know that there's anything more to say publicly at this time. I'm looking at Lisa to see.
Yeah, I think that's, I think they continue to be interested in, and we're in negotiations with them. I do think putting together, we've always kind of the, who does a transportation asset move to over the long term? Just because we don't manage transportation assets for the most part, and Union Station really is, at the end of the day, a train station service, like serving Amtrak's needs and a funding package to do kind of the very significant improvements to the track work, to the platforms, to the building that needs to occur for it to live another 100 years, is gonna take federal resources. And so, they're being a really good partner in thinking about what those federal resources are and starting kind of the discussions with the federal delegation about those resources.
And to Lisa's point and the Commissioner's question, I think there is definitely a local match component of that. So, that's likely not something that just, it's not something that just the region could absorb. So, that's gonna have and require conversations with the state, both Washington and Oregon, as well as with the federal government.
I was gonna say, related to all things federal, they've been hearing through other networks that I'm a part of, that there's a desire at the federal level to be mindful of opportunities to apply for and receive funding associated with climate-related projects, given election year and just scenario planning. And so, I'm wondering if there have been conversations around applications of federal funding for climate programs that might also align with. for climate programs that might also align with TIF districts or other programmatic projects?
One we're particularly excited about is we received, in partnership with PSU and VirtuLab, we received an EDA Economic Development Administration exploration funding for a tech hub, particularly around battery and energy storage. So, that's one. I think we're also hopeful that we could continue to partner with PSEF around how we support firms in that industry. And then, certainly, I think, building on the, our Commissioner in Charge, Carmen Rubio's trip to Denmark, knowing there's a clean industry initiative and a lot of work that has built upon that trip to Denmark, exploring a lot of those clean energy resources. So, there are some things moving and I think, you know, another one would be the project that's being led by the port around Mass Timber. So, there is a nexus. I think we're hopeful, particularly in our TIF exploration conversations for the Park Rose area, that there could be opportunities for clean industry investment there.
One other thing to maybe kind of note in those explorations, been attending a number of offshore wind energy conferences and offshore wind efforts on the west coast of Oregon are gaining some momentum to support bigger projects on the west coast. But the supply chain for all of that needs to run through our rivers in order to get there. And so, as you think about opportunities with the port and providing those resources to support that and applying for federal funds to get to that scale, that might be an area to look at. I know your colleague Catherine has been at a number of those conferences as well. So, would commend her for both attending those, but also point her as a potential resource.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, well, if there's nothing further, then I think we're about to the end. So, thanks very much, this has been a very informative session. You know, the staff and Prosper leadership, I think have just done a great job on all of these issues today. And so, I just want to say on behalf of the board, we're very appreciative. So, thank you.
Chair, appreciate it.
All right, the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much and I look forward to seeing you in person next time.
Feel better, Chair Cruz.
Thank you, bye.